While the Schaumburg Village Board meeting to order for Tuesday, January 28th, 2025. I'll ask if anybody has any recording devices or cell phones, laptops, whatever that make noise, and ask if you would turn those off so we can have a quiet meeting as I just did. Thank you. Next item is roll call, please.
Trustee Bishki.
President.
Trustee Madé.
Present.
Trustee Sullivan.
Present.
Trustee Claire.
Present.
Trustee Patel.
Present.
President Daley.
Quite right. We'll wait. I'd like to ask trustee Madé to please lead us in a pledge of allegiance.
Audience, please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Madé. Next item is the approval of minutes from January 14th, 2025. Any questions or comments?
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion and a second to approve. All those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Next item is the January 14th, 2025, public hearing minutes. Any questions, comments on those?
Move to approve is presented.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve. All those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Approval of expenditures. You have expenditures, list of expenditures, $5,348,466.32. Questions, comments on those?
Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
So motion and a second to approve is presented. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Bishki.
Aye.
Trustee Madé.
Aye.
Trustee Sullivan.
Aye.
Trustee Claire.
Aye.
Trustee Patel.
Aye.
Five ayes, no nays. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Now we have some presentations. I'm sure that's what a lot of people are here for. So hopefully I will be able to do these good and not mess up these names too much. So bear with me. So the first one is a 29-year service award and retirement plaque for Edward Kett. Where are you? Are you here? Bear with me one second while I figure out whose is whose, what is what. Here. Must be one of these here. All right. Here we go. Okay, I got it. All right. So let me, if I may, take a minute to read this one to the audience. So this is in grateful appreciation to Edward Kett, building inspector, for 29 years of dedicated service to the village of Schaumburg, 1995 to 2025. Best wishes from the village president, village trustees, village clerk, and the staff of the village of Schaumburg. So thank you very much for going out there and taking care of the inspections, I'm sure, in all kinds of weather. So thank you very much. All right, thank you.
Congrats, Ed.
Okay, next one is 25-year service award and retirement plaque, another retirement, to Doug Luczinski. Bear with me a minute. Get this out. Okay. And let me take a minute to read this. In grateful appreciation to Douglas Luczinski.
Luczinski.
Luczinski, police sergeant. I should get that right so he doesn't pull me over tonight. In recognition of your 25 years of dedicated service to the village of Schaumburg, 1999 to 2025. Best wishes in your retirement from the village president, village board, village clerk, and the staff of the village of Schaumburg. So here you go.
Thank you.
Let me give you this whole box, all right? And thank you very much for keeping us safe here in the village of Schaumburg. Do appreciate that. And I'm going to put this together kind of like that. Okay, there you go. All right. I think that's it, right? Oh, is there?
Yeah.
No? I didn't think so. Oh, yes, there is. Okay. So you got two things here. All right. My mistake. Sorry. And it's regarding your retirement also. So again, thank you very much. I'll give you that so you can hang on to all of that. There you go. Thank you. Okay, now we have a 10-year service award to Carla Persky. Carla is a video producer, editor, over at the Prairie Center, and helped me a number of times when I get to do some things over there. So certainly appreciate that. But you're not retired. No. Okay, you're still here. Okay, good. All right. So we have the same certificate of appreciation as video producer, editor, for 10 years of dedicated service to the village of Schaumburg. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
I need you to stick around so you can help me on all those things.
I've been here.
Thank you. All right. Now we have a 10-year service award to, yeah, it's a 10-year service award to Justin Grieske. And you're in the landscaping, helping to keep the grounds and everything in the village of Schaumburg looking beautiful. We get so many compliments about how the grounds look, about our desire to keep it green, the work that's been done on the creek to get rid of the invasive species and things like that so that we have wonderful-looking grounds. Many of you might have even, your kids come out to take pictures here, wedding pictures, they take prom pictures, they, all sorts of stuff. And it's all because of people like you. So thank you very much. Box. All right, there you go. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Okay, moving on in the agenda. And you're welcome to stay or you can leave if you've got places to go and things to do. That's quite all right. Don't complain. Understand.
Mass ex.
Understand. Yep. Thank you all for coming out. Okay, next item is a liquor license request from Mr. Robert Anderson for one class F1 liquor license for IKEA located at 1800 McConner Parkway. New license. And who is here representing IKEA? Okay.
Good afternoon. My name is Irene Barr, and I'm Rob Anderson's partner. He's not well today, so I'm here. And with me.
Not that norovirus, is it?
Oh, no, you know what? I had that.
I have a partner at home that's sick from that.
Oh, my gosh. I feel
Yeah, it's everywhere.
terrible for them because I didn't even know it was at the time.
Okay, so tell us what you're looking to do.
But anyway, so we have two representatives from IKEA here, and I'll give you a little information about them and about what's going on. Levi Svarda and Samantha Gravina. Make sure I pronounce that right. So they can give you a little information about their background. What we're asking for is an F1 beer and wine restaurant license for the food restaurant that's in there. It would only be served in that restaurant. It would be limited to that space. There would be signage and employees trained to make sure that customers don't take these beer or wine out into the general population. And they can give you information about the percentages that they think it will be if you'd like. And of course, they're on top of knowing that they have to have best of training for everybody who serves or sells alcohol. And I think they'll talk a little bit more about, they go above and beyond about who has to be trained. And they can answer any questions you have.
So this is, just so we're aware, this is a new license, so you haven't had that before yet.
Correct.
So that's fine. Whoever wants to speak is fine.
Basically, we actually did, it was about 15 years ago or so, that we actually did have beer and wine approval. I can't really speak to why it lapsed at whatever given time. We're actually asking for the request based on the customers that come in and enjoy the restaurant and the service in the store. Also, to have a little bit of fun with a local-sourced company, Lingonberry Beer. Who wouldn't want to try one of those, right? But it isn't really to go after alcohol as a separate entity. It's really just to accent our current food range.
Okay. No other changes inside the area at the restaurant?
No, not at all. Everything the way you see it as it is now will remain the same. And again, it will be served. It won't be in a cooler ready for people to buy. It won't be draft. It will be prepackaged into individual servings. So quite contained, you know, from our vantage point. But again, something we've been getting feedback on from our customers. So it was something we were looking to add. Yeah?
Questions from the board? Yes, trustee Madé.
So IKEA's been doing a lot of upgrades and changes and stuff. Is the restaurant still on the same, was it the second floor?
Third floor.
Third floor.
Yeah.
And they didn't make any changes in there?
We did approximately two years ago.
Two years ago.
We did begin a remodel process. That's completed now.
Okay.
Yeah, so no more coming?
Yes, no additional changes.
Thank you.
And there was a floor plan filed with the letter of request as well.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Well, seeing other questions, you'll need to come to the liquor commissioner's office upstairs here during normal business hours, fill out the application. There is a fee involved, background check done, and that. And once all that's completed and approved, a liquor license will be issued.
Okay.
Okay? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice seat. All right, moving on. We have a consent agenda. Consent agenda will be read in its entirety. Vote on it. It's by motion to approve. If you wish to discuss an item further, please indicate that when the item is read by the village clerk so that it can be removed from the consent agenda and discussed further under committee reports. Otherwise, all items will be approved as presented on a consent agenda in one motion to approve. So the clerk, please read the consent agenda.
Number one, correspondence. The motion would be to ratify the request from Walley's Unlimited USA for a raffle that was held on January 26th, 2025, at the Renaissance Schaumburg Convention Center located at 1551 North Thoreau Drive, Schaumburg, Illinois, and to waive the fidelity bond. B. The motion would be to approve the request from Schaumburg AM Rotary Club Foundation to hold raffles on February 27th, 2025, at Chandler's Chop House located at 401 North Roselle Road, Schaumburg, Illinois, and to waive the fidelity bond.
Could the clerk please indicate that I abstain from that?
Two. Finance, legal, administrative, and general government. A. The motion would be to approve the finance monthly report for November 2024. B. The motion would be to approve the finance department monthly report for December 2024. C. The motion would be to approve the 2025 business plan for the Renaissance Schaumburg Hotel and Convention Center. D. The motion would be to adopt an ordinance abating taxes levied for the year 2023 heretofore levied to pay principal and interest on general obligation bonds, series 2012A, series 2013A, series 2016, series 2017, series 2027A, series 2020B, series 2022, and series 2023 of the village of Schaumburg. E. The motion would be to approve a resolution to terminate the participation of elected or appointed governing body officials in the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund. F. The motion would be to adopt a legislative action program that addresses the priorities of the village of Schaumburg during 2025. G. The motion would be to approve membership in the Illinois Municipal League and that membership dues in the amount of $5,000 be paid. H. The motion would be to authorize the village president and village clerk to execute an intergovernmental agreements by and between the village of Schaumburg and Schaumburg Park District to share equipment and facilities and approve the required resolutions. Three. Zoning Board of Appeals. The motion would be to approve enclosure height variation for Tesla Supercharger Station 1300 to 1416 North Roselle Road, Remington Plaza. B. The motion would be to approve a special use for vocational school for St. Coletas of Wisconsin, 2050 East Algonquin Road, Suite 610. C. The motion would be to approve an amendment to existing special use for an animal hospital and Woodfield Regional Center Design Review for Gulf Road Animal Hospital, 51 Remington Road. Four. Award of bid. The motion would be to award the bid for the relocation of Atcher Municipal Center to 1,000 East Woodfield Road to the lowest possible bidder, Midwest Moving and Storage Inc. of Elk Grove Village, Illinois, in an amount not to exceed $120,481. Traffic agreements. The motion would be to authorize the village manager to execute the traffic agreement by and between the village of Schaumburg and Gulf Road Center located at 905 to 915 East Gulf Road. B. The motion would be to authorize the village manager to execute the traffic agreement by and between the village of Schaumburg and GSCRE Schaumburg LLC, H Mart, for properties located at 420 East Gulf Road. Six. Resolutions. The motion would be to adopt as resolution number R-25-007 relating to the termination of participation by elected or appointed governing body officials in the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund. B. The motion would be to adopt as resolution number R-25-008 approving and authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement between Schaumburg Park District and the village of Schaumburg for shared use of certain equipment. C. The motion would be to adopt as resolution number R-25-009 approving and authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement between Schaumburg Park District and the village of Schaumburg for shared use of certain facilities. Seven. Ordinances. The motion would be to waive first reading and adopt as ordinance number 25-010 granting an enclosure height variation for Tesla Supercharger Station, 1300 to 1416 North Roselle Road, Remington Plaza. B. The motion would be to waive first reading and adopt as ordinance number 25-011 granting a special use for vocational school for St. Coletas of Wisconsin, 2050 East Algonquin Road, Suite 610. C. The motion would be to waive first reading and adopt as ordinance number 25-012 granting an amendment to existing special use for an animal hospital and Woodfield Regional Center Design Review for Gulf Road Animal Hospital, 51 Remington Road. D. The motion would be to waive first reading and adopt as ordinance number 25-013 authorizing and providing for the acquisition of certain real estate through eminent domain or otherwise commonly known as property along Woodfield Road between Plum Grove Road and Meacham Road, parcel WF0016PE and TE 1375 Woodfield Road. E. The motion would be to waive first reading and adopt as ordinance number 25-014 abating taxes levied for year 2024 heretofore levied to pay principal and interest on general obligation bonds, series 2012A, series 2013A, series 2016, series 2017, series 2020A, series 2020B, series 2022, and series 2023 of the village of Schaumburg. This concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you. Look for a motion to approve the consent agenda with item.
One B.
Abstention.
One B.
One B. Thank you. Abstention by trustee Bishki.
Second.
Motion and a second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Bishki.
Aye.
Trustee Madé.
Aye.
Trustee Sullivan.
Aye.
Trustee Claire.
Aye.
Trustee Patel.
Aye.
Five ayes, no nays. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Committee reports. We have none listed for this evening. Comments from the public. This is an opportunity to come before the Schaumburg Village Board and hold forth regarding items that are pertinent towards the village. And we ask that you keep your comments to no more than three minutes. If you have something, just identify your name and address for the record, please. Assume you're all here for Michael. Okay. So we will move on from comments from the public to council report?
I have no report. Thank you.
No report. Okay. I think everybody's dying for the cookies and stuff that are bad. President's report. Okay. I have the distinct pleasure here this evening to recommend an individual to fill a vacancy from someone that highly regarded, did a phenomenal job for his years in office, trustee, former trustee George Dunham. Raise your hand, George. Everybody know you're here. I have a great recommendation to replace George and that individual, longtime Schaumburg resident, 28 years here in the village of Schaumburg. He spent a number of years coaching. And I'll bet you there's some people out there that were coached by him for 16 years in the Schaumburg Athletic Association, both baseball and basketball. He spent time on the Electrical Commission. He's most recently spent quite a bit on the zoning board of appeals. Prior to that, was on plant commission and the old, the former Schaumburg, old Schaumburg Center Commission. Mike has made a long time, has been a longtime resident, as I mentioned. He's dedicated, committed to remaining involved in the community. He's dedicated, committed to remaining involved in the community, and of course, has been a regular presence here at board meetings and at other events. I think his thoughtfulness will serve as a great help here on the board, his understanding, patience. At least he shows it here. I hope he's got it at home, but he certainly shows it here. So I want to make that recommendation. So I am recommending to the board to fill the vacancy of trustee Dunham's, and the name is Mike LaRosa, as many of you know. And I'm looking for concurrence from the board.
Motion to concur.
Second.
So motion and a second. Voice vote is correct?
Yeah, you can do a voice vote.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay, now the hard part, Mike. You need to come up here, and we're going to have Jane, the village clerk, swear you in. And you'll have to repeat after her. Get this done so that pictures can be taken.
Raise your right hand as I can hear you. I state your name.
I'm Michael LaRosa.
Have you been elected to the position of village trustee?
Having been elected to the position of village trustee?
And, I'm sorry, appointed to the position?
Appointed to the position of village trustee.
In the village of Schaumburg, counties of Cookin to Page?
In the village of Schaumburg, in the counties of Cookin to Page.
Do you solemnly swear?
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the State of Illinois?
Constitution of the State of Illinois?
And all the ordinance of the village of Schaumburg?
And all the ordinances of the village of Schaumburg?
And that I will faithfully discharge?
Faithfully discharge?
The duties of village trustee?
The duties of village trustee?
According to the best of my ability?
Congratulations. So I'm going to ask you now to take your seat. Appreciate that.
You get the windows open.
So for those who are unfamiliar, the village board, well, we have a lot of committees and commissions in this village, but the village board actually serves, we have six, what we call standing committees, made up of engineering and public works, finance, health and human services, planning, building, development, public safety, and transportation. Each trustee serves on three of those. One, they serve as the chairman, and then two others, they will serve as a member of that. So basically, out of the 16 committees, each one chairs one of those committees and then serves on a couple others. So at this time, I need to recommend, I have provided a list to the board, and I recommend the appointments, and I need to read these into the record here, so if you bear with me for a minute. So for engineering and public works, Mark Maday for chairman, Brian Bishke and Aisha Patel as members. Finance, Brian Bishke as chair, Jack Sullivan, Jamie Clark for members. Health and Human Services, Aisha Patel, chairman, Mark Maday, Mike LaRosa as members. Planning, building, and development, Jack Sullivan as chairman, Aisha Patel and Jamie Clark as members. Public safety, Jamie Clark, chairman, Jack Sullivan, Mike LaRosa as members. And then Mike LaRosa chair, chairman of transportation, with Mark Maday and Brian Bishke as members. And I ask for your concurrence in those appointments.
So moved.
Second.
So motion and a second. Thank you very much. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. So those take effect immediately at the next meetings that occur. That's all I have for this evening. Managers' report?
I have no report.
It's on Monday.
Okay, new business. We have none listed, unfinished. We have none listed. Trustee, comments and mentions? Anyone from the board wishing to speak? Forever hold your peace. Okay. Then I look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
You gotta make a motion first, Jack. I just want to say something real quick.
Yes, by all means.
I just want to thank President Daley and the entire board for having the confidence to appoint me. I want to thank very much my family, my wife, my kids, my extended family, my friends. Thank you, everybody, for your support, and I really appreciate it. I hope I can do a great job and serve you well. On that note, I motion to dismiss the meeting.
Okay. Now, Jack?
Second.
There we go. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Tradition is that the new trustee makes the motion, so hence my hesitation. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. We are adjourned. And we do have cookies, cupcakes, and probably some coffee and stuff that I believe is right behind the wall over there.